Councilor Jackson.
Councilor Jackson.
Councilor Lamatina. Councilor Linehan.
Here.
Councilor McCarthy. Councilor Murphy.
Here.
Councilor O'Malley.
Here.
Councilor Presley. Councilor Wu. Council Yancy. Council Zakim.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a quorum. Council Baker is here.
And Councilor Baker is here also. Could you please record that? I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all councilors and guests to please rise, and I will ask Councilor Zakim to come to the podium to introduce today's clergy. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance, which Councilor Zakim will lead us in. Councilor Zakim, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my honor today to introduce Rabbi Daniel Klein, who's the rabbi in residence at the Boston Synagogue in the West End, part of District 8. The Boston Synagogue is downtown's only fully functioning synagogue. The rabbi also serves as the director of admissions and student life for the Rabbinical School of Hebrew College. He's originally from Newton, and after living, studying, and working in Chicago, San Francisco, and New York, he found his way back to the best city in the United States, Boston area, and we are really glad to have him as part of the West End community and the Boston community, and I thank him for joining us today.
Thank you, everyone. It was a true honor to be here with you today to offer words of invocation for this important gathering. The Mishnah, a collection of Jewish teachings from the second century of the Common Era, teaches that the pious ones of old used to meditate for one hour before beginning their prayers. Our anxious, ancient pious forbears may be anxious as well, understood that to come before HaKadosh Baruch Hu, the Holy Blessed One, consistently seeking to live in her presence and live our lives in reaction to the demands of the Holy One requires preparation. The insight, not unique to Judaism, but certainly a guiding principle of Jewish religious practice, is that any worthy endeavor requires preparation. Honored councilmembers, esteemed guests, while this is not a house of prayer, the work you conduct here is sacred. In this great city, you come here entrusted by the people of our beloved Boston to help those in need and fix that which is in need of repair. It is only fitting and wise to pause for a few moments, I promise, not that hour, as you begin this session of the people's business, to bring ourselves fully into this space, physically, mentally, and spiritually. In Jewish tradition, we call this pause and focusing of the mind a kavana, an intention, that links our actions here and now to the larger framework of their origin and significance. It is my great honor to offer three brief kavanot intentions for you today that I hope and pray will make your time here not a mere formality of the duties of your office, but an honoring of the reasons you hold these esteemed positions and the people who elected you to them. First, lech lecha, go forth. Literally in Hebrew, go to yourself. The great call from God to Abraham in the Book of Genesis echoes through the millennia. It is the call every one of us hears when we find the passion that drives our lives, the work that we want and need to do in the world. It is the call that motivated each of you in this room to the sacred work of serving the people of this city. Lech lecha, go forth, go to yourself. May your work today and always be informed by the sense of mission and purpose that drove you to this important work. Second, raba amunatacha, great is your faith or trust in us. In the Jewish tradition, we say these words as we rise each morning. We express gratitude to God that we have awakened to a new day, our souls restored to us, because God, the universe, our source, has great faith in us to do the unique things only we can do, that we have been sent to this world and life to do. Now whether or not you believe in a loving God or presence that has trust in you, you are each here because people believe in you and put their trust in you. You are here because you offered to serve, and we said, yes. You are here because we need you and we sent you. May your work today be informed by the confidence and awe of knowing you are trusted, needed, relied upon, and may all your efforts be dedicated to honoring that trust and serving the people who sent you here. And finally, mihah mocha, who is like you, God? These famous words the Israelites sang as they walked through the parted sea out of Egypt. We have so much to be thankful for in this great city. So many people are living with extraordinary abundance, and so many of our civic institutions are thriving and the envy of the world. And yet, we know that too many people do not share in that abundance. Too many are unemployed, too many live with housing insecurity, too many are receiving substandard educations, too many institutions are not serving the greater good for all people equally. We have much work yet to do to live up to the promise of this city, to align more fully the reality of Boston with the vision of what this city can and should be. Those of us who love this city and believe in it and its leaders, we pray that you never tire of the work and never give up hope. May you be like the Israelites walking through the parted sea, singing a song of praise and thanks even as the Egyptians came up behind them, that you are aware, like they were, of the forces of opposition and doubt, but always are marching forward, singing to a better world. Thank you, and may you and your work be blessed.
Thank you, Rabbi Klein, for your inspiring message. We are, as a party, grateful for your remarks here today. Thank you. Of the United States of America, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice. I thank you, Councilor Zakim, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance and for asking Rabbi Klein to host us with his presence today and actually a profound invocation. Before I move on, I just think for those folks who are out in Boston that may be watching, probably have more people watching today than ever before because of the critical nature of the snowfall that has hit our city over the past seventeen, eighteen days. I just want to thank the citizens of Boston for being patient as our city bureaucracy and operations moved to address, first, public safety. And I use the term critical because it was, this is a critical snowfall. And due to the very cold weather, very little of it has evaporated. So as I have, along with many of my colleagues, we've gone out to the local DPW yards. We've met with the men and women who do the work of removing the snow and tried to make sure that, first, that there's safety and public safety vehicles are available to get to all places. And that, I think honestly, it will be a bit before convenience can be something that we can address. So again, please be patient with all of us. We're all working very hard. We appreciate the administration's leadership in this regard, and we especially appreciate all the men and women who work for the city in emergency situations, police, fire, EMS, DPW, transportation, and sorry if I missed somebody, but et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, thank you. Madam Clerk, if there are no corrections to be made to the minutes of last meeting's meeting, will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections to the minutes, they are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Docket number 0339, message and order authorized on the City of Boston to accept and expend a capital grant contribution in the amount not to exceed $4,379,436 from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division. This capital grant contribution is awarded to the City of Boston through the Public Works Department for the design of construction plans, specifications, and estimates, and for providing construction phase engineering services for the redesign of the Long Island Bridge crossing over Boston Harbor.
Docket 0339 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0340, message and order authorized on the City of Boston to accept and expend a capital contribution in an amount not to exceed $1,280,000 from the Boston Redevelopment Authority, BRA, in support of the Connect Historic Boston Initiative. This capital grant contribution is being awarded to the City of Boston through the Public Works Department in the capacity of development mitigation funds, which will be used to assist with the reconstruction of Causeway Street in Boston as part of the Connect Historic Boston Initiative.
Docket 0340 will be assigned to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0341, message and order authorized on the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $500,000 in the form of a lump sum agreement from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation to fund the beautification and streetscape improvements to Mattapan Square.
Docket 0341 will be assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs.
Docket number 0342, message and order authorized on the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of not more than $500,000 from the Harvard University of Cambridge, Mass. This grant is awarded to the City of Boston through the Public Works Department to fund the city-led and city-managed Everett Street Improvement Project.
Docket 0342 will be assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs.
Docket number 0343, message and order authorized on the City of Boston to accept and expend funds from the United States Department of Homeland Security Fort Security Grant Program, FY15, in the amount of $472,500. This grant was made for the purpose of designing and reconstructing a new dock facility for the Boston Fire Marine Unit.
Docket 0343 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety.
Docket number 0344, message and order authorized on the City of Boston Transportation Department to accept and expend $300,000 in the form of a grant from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, passed through the Public Health Commission as part of the CDC's partnership to improve community health program. The grant funds to be used over three years will be administered by the Boston Transportation Department for the purposes of supporting the city's bicycling program aimed at low-income residents.
Docket 0344 will be assigned to the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities.
Docket number 0345, message and order authorized on the City of Boston to accept and expend a donation of exercise equipment from Converse to be placed on the fitness center at District A1. This donated exercise equipment will promote health and wellness of the offices assigned there.
Our chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety, Councilor Murphy.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move suspension of the rules and passage on docket 0345.
Councilor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0345. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0345 has passed.
Docket number 0346, message and order for your approval of a homeroad petition to the General Court entitled, "Petition for a Special Law Regarding an Act Related to Segregated Reserve Funds in the City of Boston."
Docket 0346 will be assigned cooperatively to the Committee on Government Operations and Ways and Means. Reports of public officers and others, Madam Clerk, please.
Would you like me to read?
Yes, read dockets 0347 through 0349.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 0347, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Moses Millard as commissioner to the mayor's commission for Persons with Disabilities Advisory Board for term expiring May 1, 2016. Docket number 0348, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Moxiomo as trustee of the Neighborhood Jobs Trust for term expiring on January 8, 2016. And docket number 0349, communication was received from the city clerk from the Board of Election Commissioners that they will conduct testing of the active vote voting machines at 9:00 a.m. on Tuesday, February 24, 2015, at 400 Frontage Road, Room 200, for the upcoming special state election, which will be held on April 29, 2014.
Dockets 0347 through 0349 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, motions, orders, and resolutions, please.
Docket number 0350, Council McCarthy offers the following resolution, supporting House Docket Number 3059, "An Act Concerning Genocide Education."
Chair recognizes Council McCarthy on docket 0350.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Very good friend of mine at State House, Representative Jeff Roy from Franklin, and his friend Senator Karen Spilka have introduced House Docket Number 3059, currently in state of Massachusetts as well as Boston Public Schools. Our curriculum does not include genocide in history or any social curriculum regarding genocide in the United States, the world. Recognizing that national, ethnic, racial, religious hatred can overtake any nation or society, they've introduced this bill to reinforce that lesson. This curriculum shall include, but not limited to, the Nazi atrocities known as the Holocaust, famine genocide in the Ukraine, Armenian genocide, Greek genocide, and the atrocities in Cambodia, Bosnia, Rwanda, and Sudan. Clearly, a deep study of this material for our young people will help them understand what's going on. Certainly, these atrocities have not been mentioned on the MCAS, and that's a shame, in my opinion. This recognizes that the crimes of genocide continue to be perpetrated throughout the globe, as they have been in the past. And these classes would be to deter the indifference to these crimes. This would also include training for staff and teachers to correctly deliver the message regarding the history of our world and what's going on today. With all due respect, I'd like to have this support for the House bill suspended and adopted by the City Council.
Thank you, Councilor McCarthy. Councilor Presley.
Oh, no, just to support, but if he's introducing it, it's okay.
You'd like to support?
Yeah.
Okay. Have your name added. So, Council Pressley, we'd like to have her name added. Please add my name. Councilor Baker. Councilor Siomo. Councilor Flaherty. Councilor Jackson. Councilor Lamatina. Councilor Murphy. Councilor O'Malley. Councilor Wu. Councilor Yancy. And Councilor Zakim. Did you get all that, Madam Clerk? Councilor McCarthy moves suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0350. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0350 has passed.
Docket number 0351, Councilor Wu offers the following order for hearing regarding language access policy in the City of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Councilor Wu on docket 0351.
Thank you very much. This is just a refile of an order from last November, or earlier than that, but we held a hearing in November that was very successful and would allow us to keep having working sessions on the issue.
Thank you, Councilor Wu. Councilor Lamatina.
Mr. President, please, I just ask that my name be added to this. This is a very important service for my neighborhood. As you know, we're isolated from the City of Boston, and a lot of my workers work very late, and they need that service.
You'd like your name added to this?
Please.
Yeah, please add Councilor Lamatina's name. Councilor McCarthy. Councilor Flaherty. Add my name. Councilor Presley. Did you want to speak?
Yes, very briefly.
You have the floor.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend the maker. It was a very informative hearing, and just wanted to underscore that in the counselor's advocacy to strengthen our access around language, that one of the salient points that came out of the hearing was also the need to provide access for those that are deaf and hard of hearing. So I just wanted to raise that, and I'd like to have my name added.
Please add Councilor Presley's, thank you, Councilor Presley, and name Councilor Murphy's name, Councilor Siomo's name. Councilor Yancy? You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I too like to commend the maker. As you know, we live in a very diverse city. More than 140 languages are spoken in the City of Boston. And while we can't accommodate all of the languages, certainly, we can accommodate a few, including Vietnamese. As you know, there's a growing Vietnamese population in the Fields Corner area, and we've accommodated those individuals in the past, and I'd like to see it continued, and I'd like to have my name added to this particular order and join my colleagues in doing it. Thank you.
I thank you, Councilor Yancy. Please add Councilor Yancy's name and Councilor O'Malley's name. Docket and Councilor Jackson's name. Or did you want to speak? And add Councilor Jackson's name. Docket 0351 is assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs.
Docket number 0352, Councilor Wu and Zakim offer the following order for hearing regarding continuing late-night tea service in the City of Boston.
Our Chair recognizes Councilor Wu on docket 0352.
This item is, we've been hearing a lot about the tea in recent days and wanted to make sure that we are still focusing on late-night service and the pilot that was begun back in April. I'm proud to partner with Councilor Zakim in making sure that we are drawing awareness to the fact that the pilot is coming to a close, thanks to the efforts originally of then-candidate Walsh and then-mayor Walsh, Governor Patrick, future Boston Alliance, and many of the organizations representing workers. We have had a very successful run of late-night tea service on Friday and Saturday nights. I think up until about 2:30 a.m., when the last trains depart from downtown stations. People have been able to get to work. People have been able to go out and enjoy Boston and get home safely at night. And amidst all the snow and other concerns about the aging infrastructure, I worry that this item is going to be not discussed as much as it would have if the weather were warmer. So the current pilot is now going to run through the end of the spring season in mid-June, and the MBTA will make, the Mass Stop Board will make the decision on whether to extend it in April. They're holding a one-month public comment period from February to March 11. So I wanted to make sure that we, as a council, are doing our best to help that public comment period along and make sure that people who speak, who have an interest in this speak up, because we all know that when something bad is happening and something's negative, people will come out and they'll express their views. But when something great that we want to see continue to happen, it can be a little bit harder to get folks to come out. So I want to do everything we can to make sure that we are supporting that effort to extend late-night tea service.
Thank you, Council Wu. Councilor Zakim.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank Council Wu for her work on this and to partner together on such an important issue. I think, as Council Wu noted, we've heard a lot of negative about the tea the last couple of days. There's certainly been issues, but I think it sort of speaks to the broader picture of, we need to look at long term. We need to make sure that we are planning for the future and not being, you know, penny-wise but pound foolish, so to speak. The broader impacts, economic development-wise, quality-of-life-wise, of having the late-night tea service, I think, really can't be quantified, not just for people who, you know, enjoy going out on a Friday or Saturday night, you know, going to a bar or a club or restaurant or a show, but the people who are working in those places, in the service industry, people who are working late shifts, whether it's at hospitals, whether it's at high-tech startups in the Innovation District, whether it's food service workers or other service employees. It's just such an important service that as Boston continues to grow, we want to continue to attract young professionals, people in the high-tech industry and across the board. This is a service we need to make sure we continue to support and make sure that folks who know in other parts of the state who might not experience relying on the tea as much as we do here in Boston know how important it is. Boston's the economic engine for the entire region, and having late-night tea service is an incredibly important part of that. So I look forward to having a hearing, a hearing from folks who have been using the tea, from experts at Mass dot, at the tea, and others, to make sure that we don't lose sight of how important and how successful this pilot program has been. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Zakim. Councilor Yancy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Late-night tea service, I believe, is very important, and we should go beyond the experimental phase and talk about implementing late-night service for the entire system. Mr. President, our MBTA workers and transportation workers have faced an unbelievable challenge in recent days. And I don't think this is the appropriate time to start pointing fingers. But I do believe that this issue is very relevant to the problem we have in the Northeast with these severe winters. And I admit, this is a historic snowfall that we've been dealing with. But we can't forget the sacrifices made by our transportation workers. Right now, they're trying to clear many miles of railroad tracks under very perilous circumstances. But on days like this, we remember how important that basic infrastructure is to us all. So I rise not only to ask that my name be added to this hearing order, but I also rise to commend the general manager of the tea for hanging in there under these difficult circumstances. And through her, I would like to communicate to all the transportation workers our deep appreciation for the work they do every day and for the extraordinary effort they're making now to keep the system running under extraordinary circumstances. So I want, thank you for that opportunity, Mr. President. Again, I'd like to have my name added.
Thank you, Councilor Yancy. Please add Councilor Yancy's name, Councilor Siomo's name, Councilor Baker's name, Councilor Lamatina's name, Councilor Murphy's name, Councilor O'Malley's. Please add the Chair's name. Councilor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just kudos obviously to this body leading the effort several years ago under a former colleague, Council Ross with Night Owl. Should have never stopped. Younger, more progressive, world-class cities are open for business earlier or later, depending on which way you look at it, and the third-shift worker in our hotels, in our hospitals, our downtown offices, the airport, are folks that depend on transportation for their livelihood as well as trying to support and raise their families. So please add my name and look forward to the hearing, and hopefully it will be expedited. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Please add Council Flaherty's name. Councilor Presley.
As already expressed, I just want to say how much I appreciate the emphasis on the need for this for our workforce. I was a hotel worker for six years. You know, for those in the restaurant industry, in the hospitality industry, in the healthcare industry, this is so critical. There's really no, you know, why do we, as a body, work to strengthen and improve the quality of life of this city if people can't navigate it? You know, it's just critically important that we have this. Transit is a social justice issue, period. And so I commend the makers. I wish to have my name added. And just would like to say, piggybacking on some of what Counselor Yancy said and on the earlier work of Counselor Zakim in this space, that if we are going to push for this, that we are also pushing in a dual track for greater investments, not only in the fleet, but in particular to support our custodial staff. If we're going to extend hours, let's make sure that they have the resources and equipment that they need to do the job well and effectively and to do it safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Presley. Councilor Jackson, please add Council Presley's name.
Please add my name also. I also want to applaud this body, as well as Counselor, former Counselor Ross, for his work with the Night Owl. I also want to take this opportunity to applaud my colleagues and the office for putting this forward. I think it is critically important that we actually think about those third-shift workers and also what it does for restaurants. I remember speaking to the owner of Stella, and basically what he told me is that he couldn't keep the restaurant open because he had to send everyone home in a taxi to East Boston, and that just was unsustainable. So there's, there are actually tax dollars in meals and option taxes that we're leaving on the table by not extending this time. We need to actually look at the usage of the late hours, and then from there, move forward. I would also like to compliment and give kudos to Beverly Scott, the general manager of the MBTA. This is an antiquated system. I actually found out yesterday that the Orange Line trains that run through my district are are, I know it's Black History Month, but they are the same trains that were running on the L, ironically. And sadly, we have the oldest, but the most antiquated infrastructure when it comes to the transportation infrastructure at the tea. So I want to, through this body, give a great deal of credit to her management skills, to making the hard call around safety to make sure that no one gets hurt, and that's why we shut things down yesterday, but also to the people who've been working night after night, day after day, for the last 17 days on those tracks, and also our folks. And I appreciate the beginning and the preface, Mr. President. There's a lot of public works, folks who've been working night after night, long shift after long shift, and then on top of that, and I spoke to one of them, they have to go home and make sure that their driveway is dug out so that they don't get a ticket at their own house. There's a lot of folks out there who are working really, really hard, and so it's about time that we actually have a conversation about solutions and stop pointing the finger. We need to actually grow up, think about, think about the investments that we actually need to make, to make a sustainable future for us. We're contemplating some things that are 10 years from now. I think the thing that we should definitely look at is what does our transportation look, transportation infrastructure look like 10 years from now and as a sustainable infrastructure to get people around? And while we're having that conversation, we should have a conversation about how we have equity in terms of the difference between bus service as well as train service, because some neighborhoods have trains and some neighborhoods have buses. And we need to look at the transportation equity relative to how long it takes for people to get around the city of Boston. A great topic, and if we're going to stay where we are in terms of the economic mantle that we're on, we have to invest, and we have to invest in critical transportation infrastructure. So very important, please, I'd like to sign on, and I really want to thank you for your leadership on that.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Please add Councilor Jackson's name. A docket 0352 is assigned to the Committee on Special Committee on Transportation, Public Infrastructure Planning and Investment.
Docket number 0353, Councilor Wu and Murphy offer the following, an ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the City of Boston Code ordinances regulating the practices of patrons bringing their own alcoholic beverages onto the premise, better known as BYOB.
Our chair recognizes Councilor Wu on docket 0353.
That would bring BYOB to some restaurants in Boston. First, I want to acknowledge and thank Councilor Presley for her leadership on the issue of liquor licenses. Because of her work, we now don't even have to explain the issue of that, the fact that the state controls a number of licenses and has capped it is an issue of equity between certain neighborhoods and also one that very much affects the livelihood and vibrancy of each of Boston's neighborhoods. So thanks to her advocates, we know that the state is involved with liquor licenses, but BYOB is actually an issue that the state leaves to cities, and each city can decide for themselves whether or not to regulate it or not. Boston currently has a ban, but this ordinance would reverse that ban and encourage the Boston Licensing Board to come up with their own set of regulations, make sure that we do this in a responsible manner. BYOB, I believe, would support restaurants as they're trying to open, restaurants who either can't afford a liquor license or who don't want one because it comes with the obligation to purchase certain minimum amounts of cases upfront, lots of large fixed costs. So as these restaurants are starting out, being able to allow patrons to bring their own beer, wine into the restaurant could be a great thing, keeping the hours open later on Friday and Saturday nights and bringing a little bit more vibrancy to each of our neighborhoods. It's also important that, as we're thinking about extending public transportation and access, that we're making each neighborhood small business district a destination, that not everybody's just trying to get to downtown and then back home, but between each of Boston's neighborhoods, and this would help create clusters of new restaurants and neighborhood business districts that would be attractive and encourage more people to visit and spend money in Boston. So looking forward to the hearing and hope to get all of your support on this matter.
Thank you, Councilor Wu. Councilor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, let me congratulate Councilor Wu and thank her for allowing me to be part of this. As we know, all of us, over the last several years, liquor licenses have evaporated in the neighborhoods and all transferred, not all of them, but most of them, to the downtown area. And there is a dearth of liquor licenses in our neighborhoods, and Councilor Presley's earlier work and that of Councilor Jackson and others on the council to enliven business districts within the city must be acknowledged. And frankly, this is another attempt to do that, not by using the antiquated state model of getting more liquor licenses, but in fact removing the prohibition that City of Boston has set upon itself around BYOB that other cities and towns have removed or have never taken advantage of. We all know that each and every one of our neighborhoods is centered or by a business district, and the stronger that business district, the healthier the surrounding neighborhood. This is a, an effort by Councilor Wu, myself, and others who might join to strengthening all of Boston's neighborhoods and not at the expense of anybody who has a liquor license. Certainly will be enlivening storefronts in neighborhoods and inviting activity that right now is not happening in our neighborhoods. So I want to commend Councilor Wu for inviting me to participate. I look forward to the hearing and convincing the mayor, the administration, and the licensing board that this is a positive step for all of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy. Councilor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, I do think we, since we bandy around the term a lot that we're a world-class city, it is appropriate that we would have a conversation about diversity or diversification of culinary options that would behoove us as a world-class city that we are and we continue to strive to be. Just, you know, quick context here, and I appreciate folks acknowledging my work in this, but this was really work that we did together. You know, people were very skeptical that there would ever be liquor license reform and a more level playing field when it comes to the procurement and distribution of liquor licenses, and because of the work of this body and two mayors, Tom Manino and Marty Walsh, in a legislature, we are where we are today and can have this conversation. And thanks to the advocates, people like Future Boston Alliance, who have played an incredible grassroots advocacy role, not only in the blueprint of our home rule and the passage of it, but also in the late-night tea service debate and so many other worthy causes. So, you know, we have arrived at this space because of a lot of work by a lot of people. And although the final legislation was not everything that we had hoped, for me, that was including a lifting of the cap in its entirety, but there's simply, you know, pun intended, wasn't an appetite for that, you know, we did accomplish a lot. The city now has control of the board, and we have 75 new licenses, 80% of those that are restricted, so that we can really get at this issue of disparity and ensure that every neighborhood has an equity and opportunity to build community and to build wealth. So I'm encouraged by our progress, but I'm not yet satisfied. And so, given the important role that restaurants play as economic anchors and job creators, I'm really focused right now on the successful implementation of the law that we saw advance because of the efforts of this body. So, you know, that really is what I think the focus needs to be. You know, I'm glad that we're in a space where we can explore more innovative models, but we still have a huge disparity issue, and we really need to get the larger issue of just there simply not being enough licenses available. So I think the conversation is an important one, and I welcome it. I have a lot of questions and a lot of concerns. So let me just try to tick off, you know, some of them. One, I'm worried about creating a tiered system. I don't want neighborhoods cited in my legislation like Hyde Park and Mattapan and Roxbury to be relegated to BYOB. You know, the whole point is these neighborhoods that have historically been disenfranchised and marginalized deserve full amenities and hospitality, and that means sit-down restaurants. And I don't want them to be relegated to BYOB status. So independent of BYOB, I'll continue to push for increased capacity and capital, in particular for neighborhoods like Roxbury, Mattapan, and Dorchester. You know, some of my other concerns are around oversight and enforcement. I know it was cited in the, in the proposed ordinance here that the licensing board could determine regulations, but you know, one of the biggest charges of the licensing board is to ensure that as these licenses are distributed, that they're distributed to people who will responsibly distribute this alcohol. And if people are just coming in with BYOB, you know, how do we enforce that? What is our liability if someone drinks too much and then gets behind their vehicle and is in a drunk driving accident? You know, that's my concern. You know, my other concern is that in recognizing that only 1 in 10 restaurants is successful, and 60% of your profit margin is on food and the rest is on your bar, you know, the reason why we did the good work that we did is to increase the likelihood of restaurants being successful, and this hurts their bottom line. You know, what happens is that people call up a restaurant and they say, "I have a really expensive bottle of wine, I'd like to bring it in." And the restaurant will say, "We can get you that bottle of wine." And more often than not, the patron will say, "No, that's okay," and they bring in their own bottle, even though it's currently banned. And that hurts the bottom line for our restaurateurs, that is, people just simply trying to discount their bill. The other thing that I'm concerned about in this is that it hurts tipped workers. This is the difference between getting 20% on a bill that's $100-plus or more, and now that is reduced considerably. So I think this is an important conversation to be had. I'm not saying I oppose it, but at this point, I can, I cannot endorse it because I simply have too many questions and, you know, rather than stand up here and do a Wendy Davis filibuster and ask all of them, I look forward to a spirited and robust hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zakim.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Want to applaud Councilors Murphy and Wu for bringing this forward. Someone, I went to college in Philadelphia, which is a city with a very active BYOB restaurant scene, and it was really important, I think, smaller restaurants, places that were starting off, places that might normally only be a lunch spot, were able to, I think, really have an opportunity to grow their dinner business, to expand, because people had the opportunity to bring their own without spending, as we've heard through Councilor Presley's great work, Councilor Jackson's work in this space, how expensive liquor licenses can be in this city and having that opportunity. I think especially with our vibrant food truck culture, where people are bringing, you know, testing out ideas in a food truck, then bringing them to a brick-and-mortar location, then maybe possibly wanting to expand into more of a sit-down restaurant, and having this option, I think, is important. I don't want to discount, you know, concerns of folks who hold liquor licenses already. I think making sure that where BYOB is allowed is done in areas that are underserved by current liquor licenses, I think certainly many of the neighborhoods I represent, I think Back Bay is probably not the best place for BYOB, but making sure we're doing it in a responsible way, both from a regulatory standpoint, making sure that there's no issues of over-serving or serving underage folks. But those are challenges I think our licensing board and I think our police department are more than up for, and I certainly look forward to having this discussion and making sure as we talk about this in the context of the late-night tea, of growing our, you know, Boston as a world-class city. This is incredibly important to make sure that when people are starting a restaurant, that whether it's $300,000, $400,000, $500,000 for a liquor license, that's a huge amount of money if you're not, you know, a famous chef or you're not, you know, a Capital Grill or the Palm Restaurant. So I think making sure we give that opportunity to innovators in this space as well is important. So I look forward to the hearing and finding out the best way to put something like this in place for Boston. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Lenahan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I rise to recognize the intention of the order here, and as I have recognized in my eight years, anytime that the council has tried to expand the opportunity for small businesses to grow with the use of alcohol as a stimulus for that business. And I think that this is an additional opportunity for that, but I have many of the same concerns as Councilor Presley does about how this moves forward. And just for the record, BYOB means bring your own booze to a particular restaurant. So I have serious concerns about the size of a restaurant that may be allowed to have BYOB. I have concerns about the amount of gratuities that would be, would not end up in the hands of many of our hospitality workers. I, that districts such as Councilor Zakim's, myself, Councilor Siomo's, there are places where there are many restaurants and many establishments that have liquor license with enormous six-figure investments in this area. So the intention of expanding small business restaurants specifically by the use of expanding alcohol in those is something that I would entertain. But I think that as a council, we have to be extremely definitive about how we would move forward with something like this so that, so that it can do exactly what it's intended. And even in my district, we would entertain the idea of a restaurant, 25 seats, and a very unique genre of food, and see that you could bring your own booze to the restaurant. But when you start talking about larger establishments, maybe running a restaurant in a PMR Cat Hall or a VFW Hall, you know, that becomes a whole nother situation. Insurance, public safety, accountability, all of those sorts of things. So it's a great idea in the sense of expanding that opportunity, but it's also, there's much work that needs to be done around the issue. Now, thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. And please add the name of Councilor Baker. And Councilor McCarthy. And docket 0353 will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations.
At this point, we will handle late-file matters. There are three late-file matters in the hands of the clerk, which in absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are added to the agenda. Madam Clerk, please read the first late-file matter.
To the City Council, on February 11, 2015, dear councilors, I hereby transmit for your approval an order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend funds totaling $475,000 from the Knight Foundation to the City of Boston's Department of Innovation and Technology, known as DO-IT, and the Boston Public Library to join forces in making the city's data more accessible. I urge your honorable body to adopt this order as soon as possible so that the City of Boston may accept the funds expeditiously and expend them for the purpose for which they were granted.
Now, thank you, Madam Clerk. The first late-file matter will be placed in the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. Please read the second late-file matter.
Thank you. Offered by Councilor Stephen J. Murphy, an order for hearing to discuss ROKA's continued work in Boston. Whereas founded in 1988, ROKA is an outcome-driven organization dedicated to transforming the lives of the most high-risk young people, ages 17 to 24. Therefore be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council holds a hearing to discuss ROKA's continued work in Boston.
Councilor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. ROKA is an extremely successful organization in turning around the lives of high-risk youths. It's been around since 1988. I think it was founded in Chelsea. The city of Boston just signed on in 2013, I believe, to be a partner with ROKA in providing services to some of our at-risk youth. And ROKA frankly is looking to expand in Boston, and this order would give a forum for those expansion efforts through the Committee on Public Safety, and I'm hoping you'll assign it there, Mr. President. I look forward to it because ROKA is a very successful program and is worth expanding here in Boston. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy. Councilor Sal Lamatina.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that my name be added, and I want to commend Councilor Murphy for this order. ROKA, they're doing a great job there, working in East Boston. Marley Baldwin, who is organizer and the founder of ROKA, is doing a great job working with pregnant teens and teenagers at risk, and I think- And I think it's very important that, um, the city really gets involved with this program. Uh, they've been trying to, um, do their best in East Boston, but, um, they really need to be recognized by the city and the city agency. So I ask that my name be added, ask that we have a hearing, a speedy hearing, and see how we, as a city, could work with ROKA. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Lamatina's name, Counselor McCarthy's name, Counselor Wu's name, add my name, Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Flaherty's name. Um, Counselor Presley, you have the floor.
This is the Chair of Public Safety. You've, uh, you know, gotten these issues and done so much work in this space. And so, um, I thank you for raising a, uh, elevating the good work of ROKA. Uh, what I so appreciate about this model, and I've said before, is we have many efforts in the city that are focused on prevention, but not nearly enough focus on intervention. And I worry about that because it sends a message that our young people, in terms of our support and encouragement, that they have a shelf life. And after a certain age, if you haven't gotten it together, we're not going to help you get it together. And that's why intervention models like this are so critically important. So I commend the Maker and wish to have my name added.
Uh, please add Counselor Presley's name. Uh, Counselor Zakim.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend Counselor Murphy for, uh, for bringing this, uh, order before the council. I think, uh, ROKA's work, I've had the opportunity to, uh, to learn about even before my time on the council and since I've met with many of their staff, um, and some of the folks they work with. It's an incredible organization, doing much-needed work, really across the greater Boston area. And one of the most important things, um, that I think ROKA can, uh, can talk to us in the City of Boston about is their use of, uh, social innovation bonds for financing their programs, which is something I know, um, I think we've discussed briefly here in the council, but as a former municipal bond attorney, is an incredibly exciting, um, avenue for funding social programs like this, targeting, um, at-risk youth, targeting, um, you know, folks who, to make sure that we are results-oriented and finding ways to make sure that the city or the state or whatever agency is funding this is really getting its money's worth. And ROKA is a great example of a results-based, you know, data-driven model that's incredibly successful. So I look forward to hearing, knowing more about what ROKA has been doing and what they can do in the City of Boston. Please add my name.
Uh, please, uh, add Counselor Zakim's name. Thank you, Counselor Zakim. Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I, I rise, uh, to compliment, uh, Counselor Murphy on, on this, uh, matter. They're just located in Roxbury. I'm really actually happy, um, that they are, uh, actually in, in my district, um, and doing this work. And this is hard work. Um, and as Counselor Presley noted, um, we're not talking about at-risk young people. We're talking about proven risk young people. Um, and we know in the City of Boston that we have a packed list of 300 young men who are most likely to get shot or be shot, uh, in the next year. Um, that most of them are homeless, and, uh, most of them are, uh, in terms of employment, uh, not employed at this time, in particular because of their quarry. There are many of them who want to get out, uh, but can't find a way out. Uh, and it's really interesting, this program, uh, to move up to the next level, you have to, uh, go to work every day for, I think it's two months. And generally, it takes them over a year to do that for a whole host of reasons. Uh, and so I think when we look at, uh, how we spend money, um, that this is one of the best expenditures of our dollars. It costs about $48,000 a year, uh, in Suffolk County to incarcerate somebody, um, which doesn't help them after they get out. And programs like this, uh, actually help, uh, people who are deeply involved, uh, in, uh, difficult activities, um, change their lives around, um, and actually, uh, able to, uh, contribute to our society, contribute to their family and their kids. Cause there's, there's another aspect of this that we don't think about, is that if you have children and you're incarcerated, what happens to your children? And also if you're a young man, uh, and, and you have children, um, and you can't contribute, how are you actually able to be part of your family? Uh, so there's something, uh, to be said, not only about public safety, but about human dignity, that, uh, programs like this help people to have. And so I'm, I'm proud to, uh, support this organization. I will also note, things happen when you deal with folks who are in, uh, in this life. There are, uh, there's, there's no, um, straight line to people getting out. Um, and sadly, um, there was, uh, some things that happened even today in, in our city relative to, um, to this type of, of program. We need to stay with them. We need to, uh, be steadfast with them because they're doing the right thing. And as I said, none of this is a straight line. Uh, there's no easy way out of situations of folks who are 25 and 30 years old. Uh, but we need to continue as a body, as a city, um, and as a community, uh, to support ROKA, but in particular, the young men and women that they serve. Uh, because for each one of those folks, you're turning around not only that individual life, but the lives of all those folks around them, as well as their families and their little brothers and their little sisters, who are the ones who are most likely, uh, to, to get involved in, uh, gang activity, uh, and, and, and life. And I would lastly say, well, this isn't the 90s. These young people aren't making a lot of money. Um, we were just having, uh, Counselor Flaherty and I were just having a conversation about folks shoveling, uh, for 20, 25 bucks an hour. Most of the folks that are out there, um, can't even think about making that much money. So it's so awesome that there's a program like ROKA, and I appreciate, uh, the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, um, pulling together this hearing, and I look forward to supporting it. Please add my name.
Uh, please add Counselor Jackson's name. Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Yancy.
You very much, uh, Mr. President. Let me just say that the folks at ROKA have done their homework with this body. I've had the opportunity of meeting with, uh, the leadership, um, many, many months ago. And what impressed me certainly was their commitment, um, to, to justice, basic justice for people who may have been forgotten in our society. But the other thing that struck me is that they represent a great model that perhaps could even be emulated within our own departments and, and city, particularly our street workers' program. Um, I believe, uh, tremendous potential. Uh, so we should take a very close look at this model of, uh, public and private partnership, but also, uh, draw from it to, to expand some of the activities that city governments involved with, because we all share the goals of ROKA. Uh, so I'd like to have my name added. And I, I commend, uh, my good friend, the Maker, uh, Counselor Murphy has done a, a great job for us by bringing this before us today. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Yancy. Please add Counselor Yancy's name, Counselor O'Malley's name. I think I said, please add my name. And if I could, I, I just wanted to, uh, um, add a comment without moving my, my spot that having dealt with ROKA in the past in, in another life where I did youth programming, public safety committees for the, for the administration, they are, if, the most capable of dealing with the most difficult young people. So I congratulate you and, uh, looking forward to a spirited, uh, hearing and hopefully, uh, identifying resources. Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Madam Clerk, the third late file matter. What? Oh, assign. And please assign that to the Committee on Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. The third late file, offered by Counselor Timothy McCarthy and Michelle Wu, order for hearing regarding the installation of identifying flags of, of, on Boston fire hydrants. Excuse me. Whereas the City of Boston has experienced a record-setting snowfall this winter, causing many dangerous conditions, one of the most serious being fire hydrants buried in multiple feet of snow. Therefore be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a hearing to discuss methods and procedures to install identifying markers to fire hydrants in Boston. The mayor's office, Boston Fire Department, and Boston Public Works will be invited to attend.
Uh, the Chair recognizes, uh, Counselor, uh, McCarthy on the third late file matter.
Thank you, uh, very much, Mr. President. And, uh, thank you for Counsel Wu for, uh, jumping on board. I have no idea where this, uh, idea came from. Uh, we've had a little bit of snow lately, so, um, clearly, uh, fire hydrants have been an issue throughout the city, especially during this epic snowstorm. Um, speaking to many firefighters, I had a long conversation actually with my nephew who's out of, uh, Grove Hall, um, Engine 24, and literally showed me the map of, uh, what they're going by. Um, and it's a paper map of where they believe fire hydrants are. And what I say believe is because in the winrow of seven feet of snow, it's somewhere under there. Um, and if we attach these flags, uh, steel flags, that would be probably another three feet on top of that with a little reflector, um, in the heat of, uh, a major fire, a lieutenant or a captain can flash a flashlight down the road, it would reflect immediately and they'd know exactly where the fire is. Um, these flags would be added, uh, hopefully into the protocol, I'm guessing, of Boston Water and Sewer, uh, where they'd be attached in the fall, late October, early November, and then removed from the fire hydrants in the springtime. Um, and we'll talk about that, uh, in a hearing. I look for an expedited hearing, and, uh, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Wu.
This is my week to be chatty, I guess. Uh, but I just wanted to rise and support Counselor McCarthy, say thank you for letting me partner on this, obviously very timely. And we read in the Globe today about how seconds can really make a huge difference. Um, so hopefully, this is something that we will, uh, maybe not be needing as much of next winter, but, uh, will be a great innovation and extremely important for public safety and making sure that, um, not just the firefighters who are working very hard to uncover the hydrants are able to locate them, but even residents who may be reminded when they see that flag in, in the snow coming down that they, it's their duty, uh, to, to go help and dig that out as well.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Wu. Counselor Murphy. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to, um, commend Counselors McCarthy and Wu, ask to have my name added, and simply say that, you know, all of us know that there are precious seconds that, uh, can be the difference between life and death in a fire, uh, in an event like a fire. And, um, getting the, the apparatus hooked up to a, um, working hydrant could cause those precious seconds to elapse. So this is a, a no-brainer in my view, and, uh, I'd like to have my name added. Thank you. Um, thank you, Counselor McCarthy, I mean, Counselor Murphy. And, uh, please, uh, add Counselor Murphy's name, Counselor Siomo's name, Counselor Lamatina's name, Counselor Presley's, Counselor Yancy's, Counselor Zakim. Please add my name, Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to, uh, commend the two Makers, ask that my name be added, and share a little, uh, story. Just yesterday, I put a call-out on social media to kids from District 6, asking them if they were to take a picture of a, uh, plow, a, a covered, uh, fire hydrant, uh, clean it out, then take the after picture and send it to me. I'd send them a $5 gift card to JP Licks, which is a great local business, one in Jamaica Plain, one in West Roxbury. Uh, and just, uh, anecdotally, we've already seen a number of kids take us up on the offer, and JP Licks donated a couple gift certificates, as did several other parents that chip in. Um, and sort of putting this out there, and the response has been great, I'd urge you all to do the same. I did a little research, and there are well over 13,000 fire hydrants in the City of Boston. One of the questions I was asked is how many fire hydrants are in your district? I didn't know. Found out over 13,000 citywide. Uh, there's also a great website called AdoptaHydrant.org, which is a little wonky, but it can identify them and help. So I commend the two Makers for this, wish that my, ask that my name be added, and hope that we can also incorporate technology and what is already out there, uh, to help. And it's a great way to get kids involved. I think it obviously serves a very important public safety service by making sure that the fire hydrants are clear, but also instills in these kids a lesson about responsibility and civic pride. Uh, you know, we could dub it the Junior Boston Fired Brigade or something, but I think there's a real opportunity to both provide a public service with these cleared fire hydrants and also, uh, maybe teach the kids a thing or two. And they got ice cream, we all win. So, uh, looking forward to working with my colleagues as we go forward on this. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Jackson.
Uh, I'd like-
Please add Counselor O'Malley's name.
And please add my name. I want to, uh, compliment the authors of this, and I, I, the only, uh, quibble will be, uh, around how high the flags should be. I think I only heard seven feet. Uh, I think you might have to raise it to eight feet. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Jackson, and please add Counselor Jackson's name. Uh, that, uh, matter would be placed in the Committee on, um, Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. At this time, uh, are there any takers on green sheets? Glad to hear it? Or glad not to hear it? There are no late file matters for the consent agenda, am I correct, Madam Clerk? Where, where is that? Oh, right there. Okay. There we go. There are two late file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing and hearing no objections, the matters are so added. The Chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the consent agenda is adopted. I'd ask, uh, all guests and all members to, uh, please rise as the council prepares to adjourn in today, uh, adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Siomo, Noreen Teeny, and Mary Maria Tempesta. For Counselor Baker, Jean Lee. Excuse me. For Counselor Flaherty and the Chair, Francis Frankie Flaherty, Jr., Ian Honey Libby, Maurice C. Miller, and John J. Mann. For Counselor Jackson, Doris M. Cruz, aunt of Tito Jackson, Chief of Staff, Nick Shaw Sadler, Sam Sad, um, from Highland Park up in Roxbury. And, uh, John Wilson. For Counselor Lamatina, Al Siciliano, Achilles Leo Delio, Alfonso Paul, uh, Chacioti, and, uh, Beverly Marie D'Amico Piazza. For Counselor Murphy, Thomas Kelly. For Counselor Yancy, Danny Toon, and again, John Wilson. Uh, a moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, February 25th, 2015, at 12 o'clock noon. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the council is so adjourned.